So I will call this meeting to order and ask everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With that, Danielle, would you please take a roll call vote? Vote, roll call, please. Long day.
New bill.
Here.
McKay. Shank.
President.
Christopher. Lotland.
Here.
Sevenye.
Here.
And Lee.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, yeah. Yeah, so we have a quorum, even though we have several missing. All right, with that, then, we have the meeting minutes from May 25th, 2021. Do we have any comments or questions? If not, we have a motion to approve.
I make the motion, we approve the minutes from the June, uh, May, you look at it, 25th regular meeting that they are approved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Steven.
Aye. He said aye, let me check.
Any opposed? Just wave, you're far away.
He's got a big desk.
Any opposed?
It's aye.
Big guy.
Can you hear me now?
All right, so the meeting minutes are approved, as presented. Neil, did you have something?
No.
All right. Um, next, we have the approval of today's agenda.
I have a motion, I need the motion, we approve today's agenda for June 22nd, 21.
Second.
Second, anywhere?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No, no one is opposed, the agenda as presented is approved. Danielle, do we have any resolutions, communications, or notices that we need to be aware of?
No.
And we have no items for a public hearing this evening?
No.
So that moves us on to I'm sorry Danielle, what did you say?
Nothing.
Okay, so that moves us to new business, and first on the agenda is the mining applications that we received, which is plans that have been reviewed by our consultant and also bonds that we'll need to review. So with that, I'll pass it to Tim to cover your reports. Why don't we start first with the Groveland Sand and Gravel?
Good evening, Madam Chair, my apologies, I am mobile right now. I had to do an SOS to pick up my son from swimming class, so I am about five minutes from my computer, and I will pull up those reports as soon as I get there. But in generality, most everything is pretty good with the the three mining applications that were submitted by Levy. I can go through some of the details or answer specific questions if anyone on the commission would like to, like to get into the details, but like I said, I will I can pull up my computer and share some screens and stuff with you in several minutes.
Yeah, let's, so we'll hum a few bars in the interim while you're transitioning from mobile to your desk. So, um, just a general topic, we have several new members on the Planning Commission, and one of the things I think would be helpful is, Bob, you know, maybe you could help in assisting this, but I think having a tour of the mining facilities so that people can, you know, see them, have an understanding of what the operations are, it's, you know, looking at the plans is one thing, but it doesn't really give you much of a flavor for what's going on, and, and I don't know, Tim, if it would even help if you were there to kind of just talk about what you do as far as a mining review and, you know, as you take a look at the property, I just think, because it's a big part of our township that having the Planning Commission be knowledgeable of what goes on with the mines would be helpful.
It certainly would, and yeah, we're actually
I think you've done that in the past.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think that's a good idea, but I would suggest, you know, they're trying to jam down everybody's throat that new mining law, which will completely eliminate townships from the mining review process 100%, and we're obviously fighting it, but it went through the Senate and it's in the House, and I think they're going to decide later in the summer, and I just suggest that we maybe wait and see what happens, because I think it's a great idea, but if our illustrious legislators in Lansing decide we don't care what anybody in the township thinks, you got nothing to do with it, it might be extra frustrating for us.
Well, I, I have, I guess, a different view, Bob, I think that having people be knowledgeable now before they take the action, so that we can, you know, contact our elected officials and say, look, you know, we're part of the township, we, you know, these are important parts and integral parts of our, our community and taking that away from us, I think, I think it would be helpful to have more voices talking to our elected officials that are knowledgeable.
It would be great if anybody wants to call Ruth Johnson or Mike Mueller, our state rep, but I can tell you, both of them are adamantly opposed to approving that bill, and Ruth is the one who calls me every time to testify on it for the three attempts they've made through Lansing so far, and I work with Neil on it, so I salute you for doing it, if you want to call, it'll help. I can tell you that both Ruth and Mike Mueller are adamantly opposed to it. We're just up against some real big horsepower on it, and we, we're not going to know until later in the summer. And if they do unfortunately pass it,
Yeah, you know.
You do with it.
And I, I, I think it's helpful for, you know, Ruth Johnson and Mike Mueller to know that they have a level of support in the community for the positions they're taking, and I applaud them for the position they're taking, but I think, you know, contacting them to say, yeah, I'm with you, you know, I got your back, is helpful.
It certainly would help, that's for sure. I agree.
So, Bob, so, I don't know how you've organized these tours in the past. Is it a matter of just contacting the individuals and working with them, and what would be the logistics to make something like this happen?
I would guess, everybody will start taking vacations in July or August. It almost is going to end up being September before we could do it anyway. And what I would do is, we could put out an email to everybody and say, give me some date, a couple of dates far enough in advance that you'd like to do it, and then I can call Levy's contact that I work with and ask him if we can get a day to drive through those three, and Barry Bass says I could take anybody that wants to go through that one or the Gibraltar site that he's got, that's, that's pretty much the two mining operators we have left.
Yeah, we are actually, I'm in the coordination with Jared Sawyer and Matt from Levy to schedule a, a tour here for their three operations in the coming weeks, probably within the next, just after the holiday in, in the July, so we can, we can certainly try to coordinate that if any of the commissioners would like to, like to join along, we can make it a little, little bit more in-depth of an event.
Tim, let me know when you get that set up, and we'll pass it through Danielle and see if we can get everybody, make a regular party out of it.
Yeah. Any, any issue with open meeting acts, if all the commissioners go at one time?
Um, you know, I don't, I, I don't know, I, I, I think this is an educational thing, you can't vote on anything there.
And we can't discuss anything, right? I know, I know it's a very touchy topic, if all the commissioners show up to a facility or a site, and we know we're not going to be discussing things, but I, I just don't want to have any appearances if we did it in two groups or not a quorum or whatever.
I don't think it's an issue, because I just took the entire township board to the marijuana manufacturing facility in Orion.
Not touching that one, Bob.
We, we didn't ask, we just watched and walked around.
I'm just, just throwing that out as a, you know, just word of warning.
Yes, I, I think for educational purposes, we can't vote on anything or make any motions, but you can certainly get familiar with it, and in the past, I've taken a lot of people to our gravel pit to show them what's going on, so I, I don't think it'd be a problem from an educational perspective, anymore if you all went to a training class.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, it makes a lot of sense, you know, reading those, the, the letters that Tim put together, it just helped me understand the wet mining versus dry mining versus reclamation, and, and, you know, there's a lot of things going on there.
All right, so yeah, Tim, if you would just let Bob know, you know, your dates, and then he can communicate that to the commissioners, and we'll see, you know, it could be, we have folks that are on vacation, and so only some will be able to go during the summer, and if so, then Bob will follow up and do the remainder in maybe September.
That sounds good.
All right, so we've tap danced, did a little jig, and now it's all up to you, Tim.
I appreciate it. Yes, thank you very much. I will start, I think, I will start with the three sites for Levy, obviously the first one being Groveland Sand and Gravel. That was the first report that we had sent in, that's the site that's located along Dixie Highway at Oak Hill, the south end of the township. Um, as I said, the plans really are not, not a lot of significant change year over year. They've been submitting the same permit applications, and the plans have continued to evolve over the years. Dave Wardine and Keith does a really good job of putting together all the applicable information for all of the, all of the operations that Levy does, they stick as close as they can to the, to the plan area as far as the amount of mining they're going to do in any given year. Obviously, the last several years have been a little, little different with the market conditions of the pandemic, they were shut down, a little bit of delay in construction, and then all of a sudden, surprisingly, even during the pandemic, there was quite a construction boom in the area, so they were, they were producing additional aggregates, I think even beyond what they had anticipated originally over the last year or so. And that's reflective, actually, of all, all three of their locations. The specifics, I guess, related to the Groveland Sand and Gravel site, this is obviously one of the sites that's under a consent judgment. It's split up into three different parcels, encompasses about 324 acres, but they actually only mine the southern acre, or southern portion, which is parcels one, two, and three, which is about a little over 213 acres. Those areas, they've been mining for, for quite some time, and they're proposing to continue. They have 100, I think it was 141 acres of mining were approved in the previous year permit, and they had only disturbed about 137 of those acres. They're continuing to basically get the, what I would call the, the last of the dry mining reserves that are easily available, both on the south side of the site as well as on the eastern edge of the site. And if you want, Madam Chair, if it would help, I can, you may share a Google map of the just so everyone, we can look at the same picture here, I don't know if that comes through. You guys see my, see my screen now? Yep. So, what's it, this is, Google, I think this is actually a 2018 aerial, but hopefully it arrives with, with the location of the site. The few different things have changed since this photo was taken, they've actually, actually in this photo, you can see they were building the haul road coming down here, that's been completed now. The dry mining reserves that they're working on are basically over in, in these couple of locations along the, the southern banks here, and then over along the eastern bank. They had set up a couple of years ago to continue to expand, do some wet mining in this location at the lake. They have not done any of that in, in the last year or more, and there's no plans this year to continue the, the lake underwater mining at this particular location. Processing equipment is, they've got a mobile processing plant and a mobile crusher set up on the site, kind of in the middle of the pit floor here. They had actually had a, a different operator, I think Tri-City was actually operating one of the plants out of this particular pit, and they drifted some of the equipment a little bit farther to the south inside of the process, process equipment setbacks that are established, like a consent judgment, so we did ask them to, and they, they did earlier this year. They're in the process of moving the, all of the processing equipment from about this location back about 150, 250 feet to the north to get it within the, within the setback requirements. So that was really one of the only changes in the site, they, they really, from a demand standpoint, are looking at, you know, probably several more years, although in typical fashion, they've been saying that for the last several years, it's, yeah, two to three years, you know, for the last five, you know, was what's left in far as the life of the, life of the operation, but this one, I would say of the three is probably the closest to being complete in from a mining standpoint, and then the, the reclamation will actually start to take place. They have slopes pretty much established on the west edge and started to get some of the stuff here set up to the final grades, the previous applicant or prior, prior to Levy's taking over this, it had actually mined this area of the site a little too deep or lower than what their proposed final elevation is, so they've been working over the last several years to you know, move some of the overburden, then you basically to build up this, this bottom of the, of the pit about six feet or so, in order to get back to elevation that's going to work for their final reclamation. They've got the berms around the outside of the site that, obviously, once the mining is done, as they work their way out, they'll fold the berms down and regrade everything. But they do have, they, they do want to expand the, the lake area, so as soon as market conditions and they get some, they had a couple of different pieces of equipment, drag lines and a few different things set up in this in this pit about four to five years ago that have since gone away to different facilities, so I'm not sure what their immediate plan is to do the underwater mining, they were using large excavators and basically bailing the lake edges about two years ago. They could certainly continue that to kind of finish shaping this, this lake proposed lake elevation, doesn't get too, too much bigger, but it's a, it does basically something like this to kind of round it out to make it a little bit more of a sizable body. So that's really kind of the extent of the the operations that are going on currently. The, as far as from a reclamation standpoint, like I said, they've done some interim reclamation, but not any permanent final reclamation. They've got all their appropriate screening berms and all of that set up, so there is a performance bond that is posted for this particular site in the amount of $470,000. And since permanent reclamation has not been completed, we would recommend that the full bond amount be retained. Bond reductions can be reviewed, you know, once reclamation occurs, as they start chipping away at that, we can, we can work towards reducing the, the bond amount. One of the comments, I guess, is that we're aware, the applicant has indicated that they have renewed the bond for the 21, 22 permit year, but I haven't seen a copy of it, so we just got to make sure that the township has a copy of the, of the renewed surety on file. And then from a permit standpoint, the only comment we had related to that was that they, they did indicate that they paid soil erosion permit extension with Oakland County in November of last year. Just need to make sure that there's a copy of that permit extension on file. The county used to actually give them paper, you know, extension reissuances of, of the soil erosion permit, but in recent years, it doesn't seem like they actually do that, it's just an annual renew, renewal fee that they have to pay, and they don't actually really get much, much in the way of, other than receipt of payment from the county, so as long as we have, we have that on file, that would be great.
Just a quick question, I'm, since I'm new at this, the bond amounts, 470,000. Being a novice, how do we come up with those numbers? It seems like a lot of money, is it just, how do we come up with that and make sure that's the right amount?
That's a great question. Some of the bond amounts were established prior or in, in past, some of them were set originally based on the consent judgment amounts when the, when the agreements were, were set. We typically try to take a look and review them and see what's reasonable from a, I mean, the purpose of the, of the surety is if the applicant were to, you know, walk away and abandon the site in the condition that it's in, what exposure expense would, would it take for the township to come in and, you know, make the site safe, regrade the slopes, you know, put some seed and mulch on the, on the area so that it's not a, just a big barren gravel pit that it is now. Certainly, the, the proprietors have a less, it costs them less to do it than if the, the township were to have to go and hire a contractor and go through procurement process to get that done, so we try to be reasonable, work with them as to what an appropriate amount is based on the amount of slopes, amount of grading, and area of potential restoration that would need to be done, so it's a site, I guess, site specific to each, each particular location, that's why the bond amounts actually vary quite a bit between the sites, because just of the size and complexity.
Okay.
Any other questions related to Groveland? Sand and Gravel?
I would like, like to compliment you, sir, very, very, very much, I appreciate you showing us a map and describing the outlook of what it has been and what they propose, instead of, as you have always had to do, is just verbalize, I like it on the screen that we can see it, and where they're going to do different things, thank you, thank you, thank you.
No problem.
That was helpful.
Yep.
All right, if there are any questions, I have none, are, are there any questions for Tim before we do a motion?
Okay, I move we approve the 2021, 2022 mining permit application for Groveland Sand and Gravel, and recommend to the township board approval of the mining permit based upon the report of the township's consultants and recommendations that the township board adopt the bond of $470,000.
Second.
You have a second?
Second.
And all in favor, because there's only a few of us here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. With that, why don't we move to the Holly Sand and Gravel review, Tim?
Certainly, I will do that, I'm actually trying to pull up a, a better aerial from the county that, than Google, that maybe it'll be a little bit more up to date, so let's try this one. All right, let's see if this this is a little more, this is a current, or more current 2020 aerial for the county's GIS system, so this is the this is the site we were just looking at, and the Groveland Sand and Gravel, so basically across Dixie Highway. This is the, the largest or larger operations that Levy has in the area, Holly Sand and Gravel, they process a lot of different materials out of this particular piece of property. The, the site actually straddles both sides of Tyndale Road, kind of bisects right through the middle of it. Most of the operations that are currently underway are all in this eastern portion. This western portion was previously mined under, under a prior operator, and there is a it's actually in the Springfield section, but there's a, there was an asphalt plant that is in the, in the southern portion of their southwestern, or southern portion of the western side, I guess, of the, of the site. Bulk of their processing and operations, obviously, this is, this is kind of the, the township line here, so this this site straddles the, the Groveland part to the north and the Springfield township portion of the south. So all of the processing equipment and most of the, the process water, this whole lake area down here, a lot of their, I'll call it processing and tailings ponds and all, these are all located in Springfield, so not part of our, our review on behalf of, of Groveland. What they are currently working on in this site, and they have been over, over several years, is working on finishing up the mining in this northern portion, and then they've actually been working to set up some reclamation along some of these slopes, as they've been working their way out. I can, just for, for him of reference, bring it back a few years to like that's not a good one, like a 2015, you can see some of the, some of the changes that have occurred in this site, they just started about that time mining this northern portion. And over the last five or so years, they have been able to basically remove and mine all that area, establish this lake, and then they've been working on reclaiming, you can see the, the green area here, they've been reclaiming the site as they, they've worked their way out. There is still a bit of, of work that they are continuing to do in this area, kind of cut into the overburden. There's a, some spots on this particular operation that they're still good, I'll call it good gravel aggregate material that they want to get, but it's, it's underneath some layers of what they call, what they call overburden, but, you know, clay and other soils that aren't suitable use of. Really, it's just a matter of economics of, you know, at some point it becomes economical for them to move the other dirt to get to the good stuff, and that has occurred in, in more recent times, so they've been, they've been digging in, into these banks a little bit differently than they, they had previously in the past to establish this, but these are getting close to finally out in this particular northern, we'll call it northern Groveland section. They mine all the materials in here, and then they have a large, a large conveyor belt system that sets up here that this gets loaded with front-end loaders under the conveyor belts, and the conveyor belts take all the material down to the, the processing plant in Springfield. As far as a final reclamation, these lakes get enlarged a little bit more, this one's pretty much the way it, it is proposed in their final plan, like I said, they've been working on, on doing, this slope was restored a few years ago. This slope more recently, and then in the coming years, they're working on trying to basically connect these and restore the slopes around this way as they work their way out of this side of the site. There's a very large berm here along Tyndale, that once they get this, this section of the operation completed, this will get folded down and, and basically sloped down from the roadway to the, to the proposed lake. So that's the eastern portion, that's the active portion, there has been no recent activity on the western portion, although when I was there on site with the Levy folks last year, we did tour through the western portion. They are looking, and as I said, with the economics of that overburden, they're looking at basically re, re-engaging mining activities on this western portion, they were hoping potentially this year, it looks like it may be, maybe not until next year. They don't have any current, in their current application area for proposed mining on this side, but they did work with the road commission to actually install another, a new tunnel underneath Tyndale to allow a conveyor system to be set up similar to the one that goes up to the north, so that when mining does start here, they're going to set up their conveyor and, and move all the material over to the to the current processing plant, there's a number of pockets of, I'll call it, you know, not desirable kind of junk material on this side of the site, they need to move around and clear out in order to get to some of their new mining operations, and then significant amount of reclamation that still needs to be done on this side of the site, once they finish their other operations. And then significant amount of reclamation that still needs to be done on this side of the site once they finish their other operations. So that's, it's a basic overview of the Holly Sand and Gravel site and what's currently, currently happening there. If there's anything else, some highlights in the report to give you. They said they, they potentially have indicated that as early as next year, they may get into the, into the western portion. In typical, as I said, they're, they're thinking probably maybe two to three years left of operation in the eastern portion, in the eastern Groveland portion. Obviously, the southern portion that's in Springfield was going to continue to operate for quite some time with the processing operation as well. There was one area in the north portion that they had actually mined in years past outside of their parcel boundaries that has now been pulled back and the reclamation has actually started there. So that was, that was corrected a couple of years ago. From a, from a bond amount standpoint of the site, this was reduced in, in two thousand and seventeen. I think as they finished some of that reclamation, so the, the performance bond is a million dollars on this particular site. Six hundred thousand for the east area and four hundred thousand for the west area. Since that reclamation was completed or the bond reduction was, was done in seventeen, they haven't really completed any more final reclamation. So we would recommend that the township retain the full bond amount of one million for the both sides of the site. Similar to the last site, they indicated that they have renewed the surety bond. Just need to make sure that the township has copy, copy on file. And similarly, the, the same scenario with the soil erosion permit renewal. Just need to make sure that there's copy of that soil erosion renewal on file with the township. And that is it unless there's any questions specific to the operation of Holly.
Just, just again, another background question. You showed they had done some reclamation already on the east part of the east side. You know, they did like an upper and a lower and they're going to connect the dots. Just as that goes, what, how's the quality of that work? You know, if they continue working in that manner, you know, connecting those two and working that around for what you've seen. How, how are you pleased with the work they're doing? Is that the type of reclamation we're looking for?
Yeah, they, that was one of the first sites that, that, that bar eastern slope. Started about four years ago, doing some reclamation there with a new mulch product. They were, they have another company they work with. Spreads, they got the grading all done and completed and they have this, they call it like a super mulch. But it's a, it's really high in organic material, spreads really nicely. The only downside to it is obviously it's, it's a heavy organic material. So it's got a little bit of a, of a smell to it, especially if the weather's a little warmer for some of the adjacent residents. But it, it actually grows. So they, they spread that, that mulch layer down. And then as they seeded that, the vegetation takes really well and it holds the, the banks together quite well from an erosion standpoint. A lot of times we see some of the reclamation, they have, you know, little trivets and little, as the rain comes down, it starts eroding. And they have to come back and continue to address and dress it up until you can get some vegetation to root down into it. What they've been doing at this site has been working very well. The slopes are very stable and the vegetation has taken hold very well. So if they continue that process, we'll, we'll be well satisfied with what, what that end product will be, I guess, for, for the future.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And Tim, for the portions within Groveland Township. I know you said on the east, you thought maybe a couple more years, but in total for the part that's in Groveland Township, under six years for the total, ten years, what would you think would be the remaining life?
I would say you, on the safe side, you're probably seven to ten years to finish out the, the western portion. Assuming that the economic conditions are favorable, that they can continue to mine and get the additional material that they think they're, want to get out of that side. That seems reasonable.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Okay, I make a move, we approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two mining permit per application for Holly Sand and Gravel and recommend to the township board approval for the mining permit based on the reports of the township's consultant and recommend that the township board adopt the bond of one million dollars total. Six hundred thousand for the east area and four hundred thousand for the west area.
Second? David? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Say nay. The motion is approved. Thank you. And our final mining report is for the American Aggregate of Michigan.
Yes, let's see, the American aggregates, or I think a lot of formerly known as the Kurtz, Kurtz Operation. This one is, I think Levy, American Aggregates refers this knows their Grange Hall operation. It's south of Brange Hall. This is Dixie and Grange Hall. They have their access that comes in here off a hole. And this one's a, a little bit unique because it's evolved over the last couple of years. We were just doing the operations basically from about this location is where the existing processing plant. And they were mining down in, in this locale was what Levy was, was in control of and operating that continued to expand the lake to the south. Like I said, similarly, flip back to, you know, if you can look back five years in the past, you can see there's been a significant amount of, of wet underwater mining that has occurred. This lake has significantly expanded. That's the primary operation that happens at this particular site. They've got a very large suction dredge. You can see kind of sitting here in the middle that basically mines along this bank back and forth and pumps, pumps the water and, and fine sands up to the processing plant. They process a lot of, a lot of finite or a lot of sand material out of this site that they use in some of their different operations. Some of it is actually shipped from here down to the Holly site to be mixed with some of the other aggregate materials to make the final product that's delivered for whether it be concrete, asphalt, or just different fill materials. So like I said, if you fast forward to where we are today, this lake has significantly expanded. The, I think it was in, maybe correct me wrong, twenty seventeen or eighteen. Levy worked on a, a deal with, what was former US Concrete had actually owned and up, owned the northern portion of the site that were, hadn't been touched or mined for, you know, thirty plus years. A lot of these slopes up here have, have actually re-vegetated, have, you know, thirty year old trees that run up on them, but they were never reclaimed to a, of appropriate slope. So these are very, very steep slopes, need to be finalized. Levy is now in control of the, the whole, the whole site, basically up to the boundary of the, the township property, which is actually obviously just to the north of here. So as part of their overall plan, it's been revised now to include the total of what they have under the consent judgment, which I believe is about a hundred and thirty acres. They are, they have continued to do some wet mining along the lake. And then just last year, in the twenty twenty, they started basically re-engaging and reminding some of the, the area up in this northern portion, both here and here, to finish out some of the, the mining operation here. And then start, they were going to start some of the reclamation process up in this northern area, I'll hear in the next coming years. They have recently completed, we'll call it interim reclamation, in this kind of square area down here. This was, was mined out a few years ago. Actually, I said, if you look back to two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and fifteen, this was, this was cleared in, I think, fifteen and sixteen. And then they mined out this whole area now. It has been completed and then the slopes have been regraded. They put some temporary stabilization on it. But this, this reclamation is not finalized or complete yet. They still have some screening berms, obviously, up along the top sides that will ultimately be rolled down and to finish this grade. This area here was a former concrete plant, is no longer there. Levy is also in control or owns several parcels to the south, this larger parcel here. And the other one basically up to the border of these residents with a little light pole, I think that goes all the way up to the south road. I think we noted in the report, but, and I'll let Bob elaborate on it to, to level he wants to elaborate on. But the township is currently working or has been working diligently for, for quite some time with Levy on a potential revision or amendment to the consent judgment to allow the expansion of the mining operations outside of the consent judgment. Current area, which is, is basically the, the border of this parcel, to allow them to get in and do some additional mining. And then they'd like to expand this lake area. The lake that is currently there is about what was originally planned, thirty plus or minus acres. They'd like to expand that lake to about a fifty, fifty acre lake, which would bring the tail of it down, down to this area. But obviously, that, that mining operation would then be off of what was previously, previously proven in the nineteen seventy something consent judgment. So, but I think, I think that's getting pretty close and we'll see if that does occur. We can, we'll fold in some new area into the, into the next permit years, a review of this particular site. I think, is there any other interesting tidbits about this one? This has got some interesting products, like I said, processing plant, they've got a, a large wash tower in that setup here. There's obviously with the, with the dredge operation, it's a little bit, a little bit different, a little bit more unique than any other sites. So they've got basically a, a water and sand mix that comes there that's in a slurry that they need to kind of de-water, get the water back off of it and then they can continue all the processing. So definitely a, an interesting operation to go in and see if anyone has their opportunity. Hopefully, we can get that scheduled in the next month or so here and we'll go from there. Let's see, as far as reclamation, it said they have been moving the hall road and did some interim reclamation. They certainly have a decent amount of reclamation to do on the, on the site, both in the north. And then potentially as they, as they move in further along the south. There is a, currently a four hundred thousand dollar bond posted with the township for reclamation in this site, which is probably sufficient for what they have disturbed now, maybe pretty close. I know that the, this amount will be revised based on any revision to the consent judgment. There'll be a new, a new total that will be in that if that gets approved. So for now, we would certainly recommend the township retain the full amount that has been posted to date for four hundred thousand until any permanent reclamation is completed. This site also has a number of permits that they were working on. And actually, just recently in two thousand and twenty, got extensions for the, through the Michigan Eagle. They have an inland lakes and streams permit for the, for the actual size of lake. This lake is large enough that it requires a, a permit. They refer to as Ilsa, the inland lakes and streams permit. That was just renewed or reissued a new permit for them in July of last year. Those are five year permits, so that one doesn't expire until July of two thousand and twenty five. So they're in good shape on that one. And then they also have a groundwater discharge permit for this particular site for some of the de-watering and pumping operation. That one was also renewed last year in two thousand and twenty, does not expire again until April of two thousand and twenty five. So both of those, from a permit standpoint, they're up to date. Similarly to the other sites, they did indicate that they are, they have in November got an extension or, or paid their extension to Oakland County for the soil erosion. We just need to make sure that that is on file with the township. Obviously, I just need to get a copy of the new surety bond renewal. And then I also just put in there a comment about copy the revised consent judgment when it is finalized. Obviously, the township will get a copy of that because they're party to the, party to the agreement. I think that should cover it. Any questions or particulars on that site?
I, I have a question. I think maybe Bob will answer it, but if you can. What is the process to expand operations beyond the consent agreement? How, how do you do that?
Well, that's why we're at a touching point right now. Today's environment to expand beyond the existing consent decree, you have to enter into negotiations and both parties have to agree to whatever it is they want to modify. So Will and I have been negotiating with the Levy people allowing them to mine the last two remaining parcels that they have at mind. Because I think the planet was set on one of them originally. The, the rub to all of this is, as I said, that I think it's Bill four ninety one in the legislature is, is trying to be put through by the mining industry. And if it is, it will completely eliminate all of the township's input and review process one hundred percent and defer it to Eagle. And Eagle has not, as at this point in time, got any personnel to do the reviews or any money to cover it. And if you listen to the testimony that they had in Lansing, it's pretty clear they really don't want to do it. But the senators are trying to force it through. So I, I don't know what the answer is, but the scuttlebutt is the House won't take the bill up until late in the summer. And that's when we'll probably find out if it goes through. But in today's environment, if they don't do a modification to the consent decree that both they and the township agree to, it cannot be changed. Does that answer the question, Jenny?
It, it does. Thank you.
Again, can I comment and thank you for this demonstration of the actual site and you explained so much. It is wonderful. Thank you again, sir.
No problem.
This one's probably a good one to go see because it's a little easier to see parts that have been reclaimed, parts that are changing and parts that they want to discuss. And you can do it kind of by literally just driving around the lake.
Yep.
Tim, did we have one for desert sand?
We had, I, I have a draft of one. I haven't finalized. I was getting some information from Barry's team. They really, I will say that this, oh, here, I'll share this screen again just to orient everyone, if I can click the right button. Share. So there are a number of parcels up here. Obviously, this is, this is north of Grange Hall Road, multiple parcels going on, many of which, several of these all down here that the township owns. This is the revolt of the, the Quick Creek Plant. There's kind of an orphan parcel that's surrounded by the other operation that Bedrock currently operates. They have a, hasn't really been a lot of activity on this particular site in, in quite a while. You'll see if you look back to the different things, there really hasn't been a significant amount of change to, to this site. A little bit of mining in this, this upper corner, which has been kind of ongoing hit or miss. No processing plant, processing equipment isn't set up on a site. It's basically, it's been all mined of the site and then hauled over to the other, other site that has the processing equipment on it. There is a small, I'll call it small, that's the eighty five thousand dollar bond. I think has been held in the past for this particular site to cover some of the additional reclamation. Not a lot of issues with this one. There's some, some overburden and some slopes that need to be kind of cut down in this area. Some of this has been, has been, I call it interim reclaimed with graded out in slopes and temporarily restored, a little bit of final, final dressing up. But because it doesn't abut any residential, it kind of abuts its own extractive and or industrial. And now the, the ORB park, there is not the same level of screening and berms and, and final, final reclamation activities to fold down some of the, the other operations. So this one is, is, I guess, call it not as complex. I, I had a review, I wanted to go out and meet with I I had a review, I wanted to go out and meet with with Barry's team before we kind of finalized our. Our report and recommendation on this one. We were trying to do that last week, but it it didn't didn't actually occur, so. We will look to do that in the near future and then get a get a report finalized on that one. But I guess as far as from a. From a reclamation or bond standpoint, the the recommendation would be the same would be to retain the the existing. Like I said, I believe the amount is eighty five thousand. Bond that is currently held on this one as well.
Any other questions? All right, with that, a motion.
I'm moved. We approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two mining permit. Application for American Aggregates of Michigan and recommend it to the Township Board approval of the mining permit. Based upon the reports of the Township's consultant and recommend that the Township Board adopt the bond amount of four hundred thousand.
Second that.
Thank you. And all in favor say aye. Any opposed? No, no one opposed. Motion carries. We are, we thank you for your reports and your time this evening, Tim. Excellent, excellent, excellent.
My pleasure.
All right, so that concludes the. Business of mining applications and our next new business will be a discussion on the Dixie overlay. Which Michelle, I will pass the baton to you.
Thank, good evening, everyone. I'll just give a a quick recap from where we started, where we're at right now, and then we can open this up for discussion. So the Dixie Highway Overlay Ben Talarico started. Think we decided as a team when I came on board that it made sense. To finish the master plan, which we are almost done with. Just a reminder that the next meeting. The next planning commission meeting will be the public hearing for that. So if you guys adopt it, it will go to board of the Board of Trustees and then it will. Be official. So that's essentially the best planning practices to finish your master plan first. And then update your ordinance so that it aligns with, you know, your policies that you've come up with in the master plan. So because the master plan is essentially done, we don't have any major changes left. We're just going through the process to approve it. We have been working on the Dixie Highway Overlay. I took what Ben had started. I was refining it. I have worked with Bob, received some of his edits. And I believe. It was sent out to the planning commission and then when we talked a little bit more, Bob and I talked a little bit more, he had mentioned that. Springfield Township had already adopted a set of design guidelines. And I'm happy to share my screen if you guys want to take a look. Those were also sent out to. They spent quite a bit of. Resources I can tell by the renderings on a highly visual. Ordinance so that not only are the guidelines written. There are pages and pages of examples of what they want it to look like. So that is a really resource intensive process and because we share a border with Springfield, we thought. You know, another approach could be that we adopt. Their guidelines so that it's completely seamless, that that entire stretch of Dixie Highway has the same exact standards. Same exact outcomes. In terms of design. So those are kind of the two extremes. We could adopt Springfield Townships. We can move forward with what we have. Or now that you guys have looked at both of them and I've looked at both of them and have some notes that we can talk about tonight. We might want to talk about, is it worth maybe borrowing some of their language? Or borrowing some of their images, more importantly, because those are what are so time consuming and. Really the most impactful for for an applicant. And figuring out if we want to blend these two in some way. So before I go into to my notes or sharing my screen, I guess I'm just curious if anyone has a sort of. Gut reaction to that based on the work we've put in, based on the product Springfield Township has. What are your thoughts about moving forward? On this overlay, on these overlay guidelines?
I I gotta admit, I I did like their the way their report presented, you know? Because you you read that and you know, and you're envisioning, okay, this is what a brick or a stucco or this kind of light pole would look like. Then you've got those graphics right there. And and I like your thoughts that instead of reinventing the wheel, if we could lift what's. Really appropriate for Groveland and that that may be a lot of pieces. We may put. You know, maybe a little more of an up north spin on our stuff or things like that. But yeah, if if a lot of that. Matches the verbiage we've got and we can lift those graphics, that would be great.
So there are some differences, which I'd like to maybe talk about in a little bit more detail. So. In some areas, they are more specific than we are. In some areas, we're much more specific about what we want. So it's, I think it's going to probably come down to kind of a line by line read through. Yes.
I I mean, I agree with what Neil stated and. I I believe as we've talked with Ben over the years that. We had been leaning towards wanting as much. Illustration of the points as possible because. Whether it be future planning commission members or the community or, you know. Applicants, you know, that are looking to develop something in the district. The more that we can see to help understand. Because so often, you know, the printed word can be interpreted so many different ways. And and I think because we have nervousness on the part of our residents. As to what's going to be happening, that having these illustrations would be great. So I'm looking that perhaps a blend, you know, of what we have and what Springfield has. Be helpful to our overlay district.
That's a great point, Jenny, because you know, you you talk about there are residents, you know, maybe being nervous about what we're proposing. These these graphics are really nice. I mean, who wouldn't want to see this type of nice development? Along their 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 commercial highways. I think that would put a lot of concerns to rest. You know, and again, human nature, would people truly read through fourteen pages of text? When they could flip through and look at pictures? Guilty right here, you know, it's it's. Us in an easy manner. You flip through and go, yeah, these people have thought this out. It looks nice. This is what I want for my community.
Well said, Neil.
Yes, I agree. The photos are the images, the renderings they did are very nice. But because this is local law, we will force them to read it word for word at some point. To make sure that it's in exact compliance.
Oh, I was just saying, general, the the general residents who want to see what we're up to.
Yes.
You know, might not invest fourteen pages of reading.
You're right about that.
And then this would just give them an idea that, yeah, we're we're looking at a nice future for Groveland.
Absolutely. I think they're very impactful. We can also, I can also organize it the way they have green belt and site entrance landscape. I I can use their headers and fill them in so that there's closer alignment with them. I did want to point out some areas that I think are are going to be challenging on our end with the way some of these things are written. So. One, they're called guidelines, but they make pretty clear throughout the document that you shall. Abide by these. So shall is that magic word in zoning that means must, right? So we're saying this is what you have to do. Which is a little confusing already because they're called guidelines, not not rules, but these essentially are rules. However, as I read through this and I think about on my end, as you know, someone who's enforcing these, if they come my way. They say that they must be complied with, but then they also use language like this clustering and staggering greenbelt trees is highly encouraged. So I'm already thinking, well. How how do you encourage that if that comes my way? And that's partly why our ordinance is written with much more specific. Detail. So this is a very common standard, but typically it will say. We'll have an image of how it's supposed to be staggered, how far apart of the tree is supposed to be. Those kinds of things because really, and I'll have, you know, maybe the staff can help me here. What do you do when a when an ordinance says is encouraged? From what I can tell, that means you ask them. And they, sometimes they will comply, but if it doesn't say required, then they don't necessarily have to. Yes.
I have a question, Michelle, and this is. You have some language in in your Dixie Highway Corridor Overlay District. We can refer to later. This is more just a general question. You have language that states if they want relief, they can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the BZA. But then you also, there was some language in here that made it look as if the planning commission had some discretion. As to approval of certain architectural features, et cetera, or input on it. And so just at a high level, could you, I think it kind of goes to this, you know, do we use the shell or has discretion? Your, what you envision would be the role that the PC plays? And then what role, if any, would the BZA play in the zoning overlay district?
Yeah, sure. So the way it should read. Is that there are instances that are really hard to regulate just on a, you know, black and white. This is what you do. This is what you can't do. Because a lot of it depends on the site and the context. So there is often written into zoning ordinance. You know, a rule that then says, or is up to the planning commission's discretion. So in that instance, as we go through conceptual design, like we've been doing with, you know, last month, we had a few people, applicants come forward. When I write my memo, I would say, you know, here's what I see, but this is up to the planning commission's discretion. This is what they are also allowed to offer in exchange or instead of this role. And that would be a discussion we have with the planning commission during those kind of conceptual reviews. But then if you were all to deny an applicant. As with any case, then they can go to the BZA to appeal. So. So you guys have some discretionary power and you can make those kind of. Those decisions and then. If you were to deny or approve with conditions, they still have the right to go to the to the BZA. Is that?
You're saying when when the planning commission, when the planning commission exercises their discretionary powers. Is that something that they can then take up with the BZA should they disagree with that? So for example, we might say screening and general, and then the planning commission says, well. We say in our discretion, screening shall be A, B, C. And they don't like that and they want to remedy it. So can they go to the BZA and. Those items that the planning commission exercises their discretion?
That's a good question. I would like to probably read through the exact wording of your zoning ordinance before I answer that, but I believe. Generally that yes, that they can.
And 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 one of the reasons I I bring that up is as we go through this. And we have areas where we say, you know, this is it, or here's where we have discretion. I just want to understand what the remedy of the applicant would be if there's a disagreement, you know, and is it always? In either case, BZA, and I'm fine for that. I just, I just want to understand what it is. Because if we, quite frankly, if we say we have discretion. Or we say this is hard and fast, if in all cases, they can still go to the BZA should they disagree. I I I think I would not be as concerned about what language might be discretionary. As long as we have the ability to to make a statement and they have the ability to. Appeal that if necessary.
Okay. Well, if if you let me look into that, then I can share. A more definitive answer with through Danielle or or Bob to come out through the planning commission.
Okay, thanks.
So so is the thought with that to put more things into the the guidelines that say you must do this? So that they could then appeal to planning commission or BZA. My concern's always if we say suggested, then I've got to view this as assuming I'm I'm cheap. So I'm going to not do anything that's suggested. Now, how bare does it look? Would the PC and the BZA still have the ability to say, okay, it says suggested, but in this case, we 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 truly want this?
So so that's why I try to steer away from language that's suggested or recommended or encouraged. And I like to say this is the requirement. However. The planning commission may, for example. Say, say one of these kind of like discretionary clauses is, you know, you have to have one tree per forty lineal feet. However, if you already have. Substantial tree canopy coverage in your front yard, then the planning commission may waive this. Something like that. So it's still, so the discretionary part is still meant to like meet a a high standard. And it's still meant to be a requirement. It's just kind of giving you a little negotiating room on certain things that are really hard. To apply to every single site.
Exactly. Yeah. You get into this physics and and we want to, we don't want to be over burdensome.
Yeah, and and that's what I was finding where I think there's a lot of good things that we can take from here, but things like this, there's a lot of, you know. Highly encouraged. But that's different than saying, you know, the planning commission will remove this landscaping formula to provide relief. So that you can do this instead. That's much more specific than just saying, you know. We really hope that you'll do this.
Right, because we we know somebody is going to say, okay, I decided not to, and now what do we do?
Right. So I was thinking, you know, some of the things that we could take from here, if there's consensus around it. Then we could just strengthen the language a little to make it easier, you know. So I don't see for any reason why we wouldn't just say clustering and staggering staggering on trees, you know, is required.
Yep, yep, I agree.
Yeah, and and I, so I say, I I agree. Michelle, that we would make it, you know, you shall put in screening and it shall consist of this. And then you can give them, from that, you can give them optional. And put in, you know, discretion of the P, at the discretion of the PC also, but. But the requirement, the high level requirement of screening, let's say, in in specific areas of their properties given. And then the details can be discretionary.
Right, okay. Yeah, so so my thought is, I I guess what I'm hearing is a hybrid, but with. An emphasis on using their graphics. Which, you know, we can hopefully get from the township since this is a public document. And then I can go through, as you see, I've read through this, I've highlighted things that are a little different than what we have. And made note of it. I have a little note sheet where I kind of compare our two ordinances. And what I think I can do is just, you know, organize it with these headers, so it's easier to follow these two documents side by side. And then I can just start copying over some additional requirements that they have. So that these two are more aligned, but. So that these two are more aligned, but not, I don't think they're going to be the exact same. But they'll be, they'll be close and they'll have their renderings to help with the visuals. Does that, and Bob, does that sound like something?
Great, great.
I'm sorry, Michelle, could you just repeat that again, please?
Yeah, Bob, does that sound like something that you guys would be interested in?
I'm sorry, the part before that, cause Danielle was asking me something offline here. I apologize.
Oh, no problem. I'm just, I'm just asking if that sounds like an approach that the township would like to take.
Put the two together and using the similar headings? Yes, I think so. And I, I think you're having a lot of discussion about the option of allowing them to go to the BZA. They always have that option, but historically, if you look back at our township. I can only think of one in forty-two years where the PC and the BZA haven't agreed.
Okay.
So I, I think we're fairly consistent and I actually think that's the way it's supposed to be. The intent is to let the PC plan and execute the direction and with rare exceptions. Have exemptions to it through the BZA. They can always ask, but it's rare that, that I think those are good granted. So if you wanted to follow Springfield's construct for the comparison. I think that'd be, to me, that seems like it would be good and easier and much similar for an applicant doing anything all the way along. What we call the Dixie Byway. To have a good understanding of consistency, as Holly intends to take whatever we do and copy it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, so if you guys can see this example on my screen, this is just an example of something where they're very, very specific. So like I said, we're specific in some areas, they're looser, and then they're very specific right here with the fencing detail. I mean, they tell you exactly what material, the dimensions that they want. How they want the pillar, um, topped. Um, again, materials in every twenty-four feet. So like, they want, they know exactly what that fence is going to look like on every property. And it's going to look the same across all of them. So that's, for example, with the fence detail, like we don't have that level of detail, but. You know, that's something that I can easily just copy over. I guess I'm wondering from your all's perspective, if there was anything that, you know. Really jumped out at you as something that you would like to update in the language we have or something from here. Otherwise, it'll be sort of on my discretion to pick and choose from, you know, Springfield, what we want in there. So I'm happy to hear any thoughts you guys have about specifics. Yes.
So, so I, I'll start off and I'd like everybody to chime in. Cause I, I, I think the more input we have, the better product we get. But I, you know, from just the, the general flavor. The Springfield is more in line of what I thought we were gonna be striving for. When, when I read through, you know, the Dixie Overlay in, in some of the materials here. I get the flavor of Royal Oak or Ferndale or someplace not that up north that we want. For example, flat roofs and, you know, different structures. And so I, I, there were several things within the, um. Dixie Highway Corridor Overlay District materials. Um, that I, I just didn't think were in the vision of what we wanted. And so I'm, I'm kind of leaning more towards what Springfield has, like the, you know, not having, just having flat roofs. I mean, I, I, I think of that as a, a urban area, not, not kind of what we're looking for. But just things of that nature. So, um. So just as a general sense, I, I liked the architectural features. Uh, some of the, and some of the specific details such as the fence that you just pointed out, that example. Because I do think that if we have consistent uniformity, it's really gonna look nice. As you go through miles of the corridor and you see similar architecture, similar architectural features. You know, on the various properties. So I, I'm for in some areas being specific and then other areas being more general. The, the other thing that, uh, just, again, these are kind of just high level comments, but. I, I recognize that we're going to have underlying zoning in these districts, you know, B1, B2 or something. Um, and I didn't go check the, um. The zoning requirements. So, you know, the answer might be there and I just didn't look it up. But you know, some of the things we talked about are the distance off the highway and, you know, and setbacks and stuff. And I'm wondering, you know, like we have in our primary REF, you know, a two and a half acre minimum. Um, I think some of the problems we've had on Dixie Highway South is parcel size. Where they just allowed such small parcels and that, and that led to such congestion. That it, it looked, it wasn't more, it was more than just the architectural features, it was the fact of the congestion and parcel size. And so I, I don't know that we've talked about, do we wanna have, um, a minimum? And I don't know if, you know, as we get into the B1, B2 and stuff and, and, cause we haven't dealt that much with the commercial property. So I, I don't know, I, I just throw that out there that, um. You said, but do we have a minimum acreage requirement for?
So B1, B2, B3, there's no minimum lot area, um, requirement. So if that is a problem, then we can add that to the overlay. Um, we do have, I know one concern is like the number of curb cuts. And we don't want too much congestion. So even if it is a small parcel, we're only allowing one curb cut per parcel to help cut that down. But yeah, parcel size, absolutely. Um. If you want them to be bigger, that's not addressed at the moment because they are allowed. They are a, a part of their base zone first, which here has no requirements. But we could add into the overlay, if you're a B1, B2 or B3 on Dixie Highway, you have to be at least two acres or something like that. So parcel.
Yeah, I, I, I. I, I would support in the overlay district having some minimum requirements on parcel size. Cause I think that's gonna help us with congestion.
Okay.
How do the other members, how, how do other people feel?
I, I, I agree a hundred percent.
With Lynn here.
Okay.
You know, I, you, you look at discussions we've had on other recent, um, properties like the site condos, right? With the businesses and we've worked hard to, you know, encourage minimum curb cuts and then, you know, offsetting. Uh, the business from the, the frontage of, of Dixie Highway. You look at what we've done with the ORV park and putting the, the split rail fence along that to try to give it that up north feel. Um, the things we did with Holly Power Sports and how that's come out. And it's a, a, a nice looking, you know, kind of up north feel look to it. Um, so I, I, I agree, it's, it's encouraging that, that kind of vibe. Um, and I think to do that, you've got to keep things spread out. You don't want them stacked right next to each other. Um, and, uh, as, as we said about the potential for retail at the, uh, at the site condos. Um, having a road off of Dixie, so there's just one curb cut that could feed a couple locations and then get the cars out of there. So, um, yeah, I think, you know, controlling the lot sizes, controlling curb cuts and really emphasizing that up north feel.
Okay. What about, um. What about setbacks? Do you want those to be uniform? Because, you know, those will also be based on the, on the base zone. But we could say, you know, along Dixie Highway, everyone has to have the same setback. So they're not, you know, kind of, one could be five hundred feet back, one could be fifty, you know. So that could have an effect on someone's experience on that highway. Do you guys feel, have any preference for setbacks?
If, if we had a, like a, a, a set setback in a, a green area, we could have sidewalk running all the way up and down that, correct?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, a sidewalk is only five to ten feet. So, um, we don't know, we don't need a huge setback for that. But if the preference is, you know, to be a hundred feet back or something like that, we could make that uniform.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just picturing a lot of people.
I absolutely.
Go ahead.
I, I support, I, I support having a minimum setback. Um, and, and, and I want it to be a decent size. Uh, granted, we, I think we wanna encourage that they don't have the parking right off of Dixie, right? That they have it to the side or to the back and that we have that green space in front. So I don't know, I, I, I mean, I, I don't have a feel for, if there's a value to have a maximum setback requirement. I don't think so, cause most people aren't gonna wanna be a mile off Dixie Highway. So I, I think if we just focus on the minimum and then allow the variation they want. On the property based on the geographical dictates.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so that is one difference. Um, this ordinance does allow parking in the front. So that's what I mean by, I don't wanna take everything from them because I think. We're on the right side of this by having it on the, on the side or the back. Um, and so, yeah, well, we'll wanna think about setbacks. If we make them the minimum too big and then say everyone has to park in the back, but they only have, you know, two acres. You know, I'll have to think through that. So we're not kind of limiting someone too much. But, um, okay, minimums, a minimum setback, we can make that uniform, definitely. So, um. Jenny, you had mentioned that you liked this architectural style better. So they're very specific in theirs, they say craftsman style or prairie style. Um, and here are the images and they have pretty specific, um, guidelines around what that, what that means. So we can pull that over. Um, I guess I'm just sort of curious how that part got so far from what you guys were hoping for. Is this the first time you've seen this language that came from Ben?
If I might comment, I'm.
Ow, I've not seen it.
I've never seen it.
Yeah, we.
Okay.
It had, Michelle, it had been discussed that we were going to do it with Ben and he kept on saying, oh, we'll do it after we get the master plan done. So in fairness to the board, I don't think there's opportunity to see it, but before.
Right.
Why, I applaud you for what you're doing here, because I think this is the right way to get it back on track.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking you guys probably just hadn't, hadn't seen this language yet. So, um, I'm glad we're, we're aligning it more to what we want. So I know what to work with here. So I'll keep, um, I'll keep it going with craftsman style and prairie style. Um.
Yeah, so, so, so can I, I just, I just wanna, be, because I throw a, an opinion out. I don't, I wanna make sure other members, um, are in agreement. So, you know, my statements about the flat roofs versus the craftsman or the prairie. Do other members on the commission support that?
Yes.
A yes from Lynn.
Yeah, you know, like, like I say, you look at what, um, with, with the Holly Power Sports, right? You know, how they've got some of the, uh, craftsman style look to it. It, it just gives you a little more, you know, they took a concrete block box and dressed it up nice. Um, and, and it has a more warm look to it than just square concrete with a flat roof.
With a lot of lipstick and really made it look good. Sorry.
Yeah.
No, I think you're right on. Um, and then they have an appendix. So they have an image after every section, but they also have an appendix. Um, where they have an actual plant list. So what, what you can and cannot plant. I'm not qualified to tell you if these are all native or not. I can have a, a landscape architect on our team look at this. But this is something that I would be willing to look at. It's, it's much easier on the other side. To say, is it on this list, yes or no, as opposed to any native species that you like can go. Because then I'm looking them all up afterwards. So these are the kinds of things in the appendix I would think about, you know, um, bringing over. You know, they're very specific about what the lights can look like, how tall they can be depending on where they are. So there's pedestrian lighting that's gonna be shorter, fourteen feet, um, double mast here. So you can put a banner on it versus roadway where you're trying to light, you know, the road for vehicles. So they differentiate between those two. Um, and then really very specific about what it can look like. And this is all you can see here, so that glare is minimized, all the light is pointing down and is cut off. So again, these are great things we can use. They have an entire color palette. So they say earth color tones and these are the colors that you're allowed to use. If we feel like that isn't too restrictive, I'm happy to go along with that. I've actually never seen this before so thorough, but it makes sense to me. Um. So there's quite a lot that can be brought here, but I did just wanna point out, there are a few things as I go through line by line. Where they say things that are highly encouraged or like they want parking in the front, where I think we might deviate ever so slightly. But, um, I'd really like another crack at this to, um, really blend the two. And bring them back to the Planning Commission. Next meeting, maybe.
Um, yeah, I, yes, Michelle, just some, some feedback. I, um, in, in Florida, where we have a house, the HOA there has a color palette. That, you know, you have to choose from. And it really does make for a great appearance of the neighborhood when you have the consistency of colors and. Um, and so I like the idea of a color palette. Um, and, and again, these are things that they can always come to the PC with and ask for, you know, exceptions. We can, you know, put some discretionary language in there and say thou shall use. Or you can have some discretion, you know, the, the PC will have some discretion if they want. I like the idea of a list of plants. Um, because I think it helps the applicant to say, oh, okay, here's my options. And then again, if there's something unique that they want, you know, that, then they can come forward and, and ask for that. And within the discretion of the PC, they can, you know, take those. But, um, I think all of that is very helpful to the applicants. And, and again, you know, for the community to, to have a sense for, for what we're, our vision is for this area.
Yeah, I agree. Um, another thing that I saw here that I was impressed by, I don't usually see. But they have a whole section on community amenities and they really wanna make sure that this is. See this terminology they use here, a sense of an outdoor room. So they want there to be gathering space, they want there to be pedestrian fixtures. Um, bike racks, safety paths, nature overlooks. Um, they really, it's, the expectation here is that you're going to make this, uh, a lovely place. For people to gather on the outside of your business. So, um. And we've talked about this as well, about, you know, in the master plan, having scenic outlooks. So this is how you would sort of codify that is, you know, that's our next step is to write that in, into the ordinance. So that if they were near a nice wetland or wooded area. That we're not going to completely block that or make it inaccessible to people.
Nice.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I like that. One, one, one comment, Michelle, of, of, of something in the existing materials that I didn't like.
Yeah.
And, and so, and I'm not sure that it would, it would stay just based on the conversation. But we, I, I have to pull up where it was, but where we go to all glass. You know, to me, that's way out of the, um, where did I mark that? Yeah, I, you know, it's, it's gla, glass and, oh yeah. So you have a picture, glass curtain wall, Ryan's glass. Yeah, I, I don't like that. I, I think that is so out of norm with, you know, with what we're looking for. So just, uh, just some feedback on that.
Okay.
Give you that up north feel.
And the, the, the one other, yeah, yeah. The, the other thing was a comment and, and it was really a question and I don't have an answer. But within the overlay district, what our thoughts are gonna be regarding food trucks.
Regarding what?
If we, you know, we're we're working on the food truck ordinance and different areas, but i- is there going to be anything different that we would want to do in the overlay district as it relates to food trucks or, you know, and I I I think of the one down in Springfield Township right now, the barbecue one.
Yeah.
Where we used to have the Mexican restaurant, which used to be the Baker Street, you know, 221 Baker Street restaurant. That, you know, seems more and more to keep looking like a permanent structure, a permanent location. You all of a sudden, you see little things growing up and and that, I'm not saying I have a a preference one way or the other, but I think we should be thinking about it. And if we do have a preference, we should be addressing it.
Mad Madam Chair, I would suggest, I I just went to that place the other day because some people had told me about it. And it was good, but I I would say that I don't think that fits the up north looking um field that we're talking about in the overlay district. But I don't know that we would exclude the trucks because some of those people, I think, intend to go to the ORV park and, you know, provide services in there, which seems to me like a natural for it, I would guess.
Yeah, and that gets back to what we've discussed before. We want those trucks to be temporary, right? You know, 24 hours, you know, a a weekend stay, that kind of thing. So if they're supporting the ORV park or car show, uh, you know, some kind of gathering, they're there, they support it, and then they're gone. And, you know, we we don't want them sitting there on four flat tires with weeds growing up and and rusting.
So just just to answer in terms of the the overlay, um so that ordinance was, I believe, already approved by, you know, the Board of Trustees. And um I'd have to look for the exact language, but I believe we allow they're permitted in any um kind of business or industrial zone. And so since that will be the base zone, those those will be allowed um on Dixie Highway, I guess, unless we explicitly prohibit them in the overlay. Um but they would have to follow all of those rules. So I don't know exactly what you mean by you saying that it's starting to look permanent. I don't know if they have some sort of foundation or they just never leave the site. But I mean, in the rules, it says that they do have, they have to leave, they have to be mobile, they can't just be sitting there. So that's the thing with food trucks is that um, you know, they are hard to enforce because they're mobile. So um so, yeah, at the moment, they would be permitted.
Michelle, if you happen to go see the one in Springfield.
I I.
It looks like it's probably never moving.
Okay.
But I think I I agree with what you said, that all of them are here and gone after a few days, you know, they're temporary.
Yeah, you know, you you look at Ortonville when they do their food truck night, right? They get four or five food trucks, everybody comes downtown, you get your tacos, they leave that night. And, you know, you do that once or twice a summer, it's kind of fun. But I wouldn't want to see four food trucks parked out there all the time.
Yeah, I I think, you know, this would be a great location to have food trucks. And so, you know, the ordinance that we passed, I think, is good. But but I don't want it, like everyone else has said, to become a permanent part that what they have down in Springfield is not something I would envision. And so I'd want to make sure, and my thing is that we don't allow it, would be my preference. And just keep the the food truck ordinance as it is and enforce that in this overlay district.
Yeah.
It's temporary.
So I think the ordinance has some good logic to it.
Yeah, I think that's the plan. Okay, so are there any other more um specific comments about things to remove here or things from Springfield that you like and you want to make sure get carried over? Otherwise, I'll go through them line by line and set them up. And my plan would be then, um so next meeting is the public hearing for the planning commission. But I can also bring, you know, unless there's a lot of public or comments, that's very quick. Um and we can spend more time going over a draft of this.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll have uh all of the other members on the commission there because it'll be a regular meeting and um and so we can get feedback. And and just if we could, you know, have this like maybe a week before the meeting so people have enough time to to go through it and think about it.
Yep.
That is always my intention, so I will um.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, we we all do, we all have the best intentions and and understand when it doesn't happen.
Okay, so is that um is that everything for this? I free to, free to take it and run with it till next month?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I think so, I unless unless anyone else has any additional input they'd like uh to pass on before Michelle gets started on the re- revisions.
I thought it was a good discussion, I'll be excited to see what she comes up with.
All right, David, you're a little blip in the screen here and hard to hear. So I just want to make sure, is there any 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 comments you have for uh Michelle takes off with this?
No, go ahead. I think microphone must be on the other side. So is the next meeting?
Um.
The third? Fourth?
It'll be here.
And just so everybody knows, we're going to have all future meetings now back at the township office in July.
Okay.
Zoom for the public if they want till the end of the year because that's the way the state law set it up. But we're going to have them back here because all the restrictions are off now.
Very good. All right, so um I don't believe we have any public on the Zoom uh call this evening. Um if so, this would be the opportunity to have comments. So if there is anyone that we we don't see that wants to make a comment, now is your time. Otherwise, we'll go to the uh consultant report that you provided us with that's up on our screen.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Sure, so um, you know, then one of the top stories in in planning these days is um some bills that are in the state um legislature about short term rentals. Um so I am just relaying information that comes from the Michigan Association of Planning, um what their stance is on it. Um these bills have gone through um the House and the Senate before and they have not passed. So these are similar, if you've heard about them before, to to um ideas that have already been circulated. Um and the reason that MAP is coming out against it is mainly just because the um legislation would take away local control. So it's not really particularly a stance on whether short term rentals are good or bad. It's just that the bills that are circulating now um are saying that, you know, short term rentals would be a by right residential use, that they cannot be um subject to special use or conditional use permits um or any procedure different from those required from other dwellings in the same zone. So um of course, this is just a common issue of, you know, property rights versus, you know, local government decision making. So that's where that's at. Um I'm sure there'll be some updates coming soon, but um currently, the the legislature is trying to um push this through so that, you know, this is very in favor of short term rentals. And I know we had a an applicant or a gentleman talk to us about his ideas with that. Um so I know that that is probably going to be growing in popularity, you know, in Groveland Township because it's such a nice place to be, so we'll want to keep our eye out on that. Um I just threw in here, and this is also pretty relevant to to Groveland just because this was a study done by Metro Parks in Southeast Michigan that really did a study on the benefits of of parks. And um they claim using conservative estimates, they could even find $92 million in direct visitor spending at local businesses, um huge creases, increases in home values, and then a lot of services that parks provide in terms of storm water management and pollution control. So um they, as this woman here says, the director of the Huron Clinton Metro Parks, you know, they believe in parks have intrinsic value, but they wanted to try to quantify it to show their value. And this was um some of their findings here. So, you know, as a township with really a lot of land dedicated to recreation, um I can only imagine that you guys are accruing some of these kinds of benefits as well. This one, I'm not going to go into too much detail, but basically Governor Whitmer's signed into law um changing some rules about mixed spirits. So those are now going to be easier to sell and ship. Um and so this has, um you know, for, I I write this for all of the communities. So for some communities that have a lot of bars or things like that opening up, um this is maybe a little bit more relevant to them. Um in July, this is the only event that I uh can see coming up in Michigan is um the Michigan Association of Planning holds a book club every other month. So if you're interested in planning topics, they meet virtually. Um so it's a good way, a kind of low key way to learn about other planning topics if you're interested. And then another, um this is a grand opportunity, but this is for um food and agriculture. You know, in Michigan, they're finding there's a huge gap in labor for these types of um for agricultural jobs. So they're trying to incentivize it and teach people, get them more involved uh in this process. So we don't lose, you know, this is a huge industry in Michigan so that we don't basically leave strawberries dying on the vines. Um we can get people in those jobs. So that is the planner's report this week. Are there, or this month, are there any questions?
Nope. Nope, none here. Thank you.
Thank you.
For that. Um is there uh Danielle, any any news that we need to know before Lynn makes her famous motion?
Oh, nothing.
All right, Lynn, it's all yours.
Don't say, nothing from Bob? I have yours. Nothing from Bob, okay. I make a motion. Oh, go. I make a motion, we adjourn.
One second.
Second, please.
You'll second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Better not be. All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and we'll.